Wake Cross presents an election forum. For County Commissioner commencing 1/1/2015. There are three candidates running. They are, in alphabetical order, Shawn Patrick Feeney, Chris Monzel, and Jim Tarbell. Hello, and welcome to tonight's Wake Cross Election Forum. This forum being for the Hamilton County Commissioner. I'm very fortunate to have two of the three candidates tonight. They are, to my left, Mr. Feeney and Mr. Monzel. Mr. Tarbell had been notified of tonight's event and with a certified letter, unfortunately, has declined to come this evening. So, we are fortunate, though, to have two of the three running this evening. So, I want to thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
In a moment, I will be allowing our candidates to start with an opening statement, and at that point afterwards, we will be opening our phone lines and emails to you, the viewing audience at home. So, without further ado, Mr. Feeney, I will start with an opening statement from you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Shawn Patrick Feeney, and I'm your Democratic candidate for Hamilton County Commissioner. I live in the city of North College Hill, where I was formerly on the Board of Zoning Appeals, and I was Secretary of the Mayor's Task Force on Land Reuse. I'm a lifelong Cincinnati metro resident, growing up in Covington and graduating from Holmes High School. I left briefly to earn my degree in software engineering from Rose-Homan Institute of Technology in Terre Haute, Indiana, the top undergraduate engineering college in America. Since graduating, I've worked in the field of technology consulting for Fortune 500 companies up and down the East Coast and across the Midwest. On weekends, I spend finishing up my MBA at Wright State's Mason Campus. This race is an opportunity to change the direction of the county, to elect a leader who will work together with other levels of government rather than against them, to elect a Democratic majority to the County Commission, to elect a county voice to the County Commission. That cannot be done by throwing away your vote on a write-in candidate, and there's no reason to expect any change from the Republican incumbent whose own party calls him extreme. Thank you, Wake Cross, for organizing this debate, and I look forward to answering audience questions.
Mr. Monzel.
Thank you very much, Jason, for having us tonight. For Wake Cross Media, for hosting this candidate debate, I just want to start by first thanking the citizens of Hamilton County for giving me the honor to serve them for the past four years as Hamilton County Commissioner. I grew up here in Hamilton County, went to school here. I had the opportunity to really have so many opportunities by being in Hamilton County that when I got older, I wanted to give back, to give back to my community, to give other folks and other families those same opportunities to have a great place to live, safe and clean streets, making sure that they have job opportunities. For me, it's just something that I grew up with. Both my parents were very involved. My mom was on the PTA. She showed me what public service meant and getting involved in community. Then, my years at high school, I went to Moore High School and had opportunities to serve there. And then, I also, too, went to an engineering school, Purdue University, which I think is the best undergraduate university in America. But, you know, I had the opportunity to get my engineering degree, came back to Cincinnati, and got a job with General Electric where I still work today as an engineer. Went to UC at night school to get my masters in engineering, and to me, it was an opportunity to move back home and to be able to raise my family here, which now I have three children and am very involved with their lives, from soccer to basketball to baseball, and help coaching them and being involved in all the different activities. But, for me, it's just, it's great to be able to be the Hamilton County Commissioner and to help families and others throughout Hamilton County to achieve the dreams that I've been able to achieve.
Well, with that, with the hard parts over, now the easy part's open to you. I'm going to lay out some quick rules of the road, which are very simple to follow. One, if you are joining us tonight on September 29th, you can join in live by participating via our phone and email. But first, you must be a resident of Hamilton County to participate. You also must give your name, address, and to our phone callers in the other room to just confirm your residency. You will not be identified by any other means other than your name and the part of town you live in on the screen. You have 15 precious seconds to get that question to the candidate, so make sure your question is precise, and it is for the entire panel. No pointed questions, please. So, with that, I do have a few questions getting ready, so I'll start with the first question, and this will go, start with Mr. Monzel. What specific actions will you, as a County Commissioner, take to address the continuing decline in tax revenue and increased costs in Hamilton County?
Well, that's something that we've been working on for the past four years, and we need to continue working on. With the tough times that we've been facing in Hamilton County with the economy, you know, with the decrease in the sales tax, with the housing market troubles that we've seen over the years, we're finally starting to turn around and get out of it. Our sales tax is actually starting to increase, we're seeing more property transfers, things are starting to look up, but we need to make sure that we keep our costs down at the county and how we run government. We need to make sure that we run like a family or a business in Hamilton County. You can't spend what you don't have, you have to live within your means. We need to make sure that county governments run the same way. And in order to do that is to keep our taxes as low as possible, to keep our spending as low as possible, so we can encourage more families and more businesses to move into Hamilton County.
Mr. Feeney.
Absolutely. So, the question was around tax revenue and decreased costs for the county.
Yes.
So, I'll start with the tax revenue portion of it. One of the things that I believe we really have to be very careful about is giving away the entire kitchen sink to every business that wants to come to Hamilton County. My opponent's business, GE, just got a huge, in fact, it was the largest tax incentive package that Ohio has ever offered a private business to locate right here on the banks, and this is going on at the same time that Mahogany's at the banks is failing after receiving grants and loans from the city of Cincinnati. We really need to evaluate these deals as they come in. We do have to stay competitive with other metro regions across the United States, but we don't need to give away all of the tax benefits of new business every single time a new company wants to come here. When you do that, you know, you give them these long 20-year package deals, in 20 years, some other community is just going to give them a deal, and guess what? We lost all of that tax revenue for that 20 years. So, we really got to be careful about these long-term agreements. The other question was around decreased costs. So, my profession is in IT, so one of the things that we focus on in IT is efficiency, and I think there's a lot of room for improvement at the county government level for bringing in new IT processes and really opening up the process for all kinds of government services to be optimized through more efficient IT spending.
All right. Okay, Mr. Monzel, do you care to respond to any, or would you like to continue the question?
Well, I think from a standpoint of the deals that were done for the banks development project, first off, the GE deal was one that, you know, there was a lot of tax credits that were given to it from the state as well as from the city of Cincinnati. The actual county portion of it was very small and dealt with just with the parking that was underneath the building that was going to be built. Mahogany's, I totally agree, that was just really not a good business move. The city of Cincinnati should not have gotten out and given grants, a million dollars, to a small business owner. Unfortunately, you know, that business has been caught in, and just really a bad deal for them from the city of Cincinnati. So, you know, for me, it's really important that we have opportunities for folks to come here. We need to keep our taxes low and our, cut the red tape as much as possible at the, you know, bureaucracy level so that businesses can thrive.
Mr. Feeney.
Sure. I'll just say, the less red tape, the better.
Agreed.
All right. Moving forward, again, Mr. Feeney, what two specific steps, issues, or incentives, or initiatives will you advocate in the next four years to help expand the economic base in Hamilton County?
So, you know, going back to attracting businesses to Hamilton County, one of the ways we do that is we remain competitive with other metro regions across the United States. So, when you look at what's going on across the United States, in addition to all these tax deals that they're giving out, they also have a lot of public infrastructure spending. So, I believe one of the best ways we can attract businesses to Hamilton County is to increase our investments in public infrastructure significantly, to the best of our ability. And in doing so, and giving alternate options of transportation, and making sure that our sewers are up to date and our water is safe to drink, you know, doing these things, we will attract businesses to Hamilton County.
Mr. Monzel.
You know, government doesn't create jobs. Government's not in the business of doing that. It's the small businesses out there, the businesses in our community are the ones that actually create the jobs. What county government, and any government, in my opinion, needs to do is just not be in the way of those companies, those businesses, from actually being able to create the jobs. So, we have to keep our taxes low, keep our regulations as small as possible, while at the same time, making sure we're providing those services that are mandated by Ohio Revised Code, from public safety measures to, you know, streets and safety measures for the community. But, for me, I think the important thing is understanding that, you know, to really improve economic development, we need to make doing business easier here in Hamilton County. And to that end, we created a red tape cutter position in our building department whereby we brought an individual in to help out businesses navigate this bureaucratic maze of how do you get a permit, how do you get a plan approved through the building department in Hamilton County. We've had many complaints from developers saying just how long it took for their plans or permits to get done, and with this position, we've been able to cut that time down. We've reorganized the department, we made satellite offices that are open up, we put one in Corrine Township, we're putting one over in Anderson Township, to make it easier for folks who, homeowner who wants to put a deck on, or a business that wants to add on to their existing structure, that they can get their plans and permits done quickly so that they can start opening up and creating more jobs for our community.
Mr. Feeney.
Sure, absolutely. You know, you hear this a lot, government doesn't create jobs. And you're right, other than, you know, a few public servant positions, they don't create jobs, but you don't have jobs without government. If you don't have the infrastructure that government provides, nobody's going to create jobs in Hamilton County. And what kind of infrastructure is that? Well, you need roads, you're going to be able to move your product from state to state, from county to county. You need high-speed internet, you know, technology businesses are booming nowadays, particularly right there in OTR, so we need to make sure that's affordable. We need affordable housing. If you don't have housing for your workers, you know, the jobs will go elsewhere. And we most of all need affordable office space to keep these businesses here.
Mr. Monzel.
Well, I think those are all very important things that we need to focus on. Government does have an aspect of providing those basic services, you know, such as streets, such as sewers, such as clean water, such as public safety. That is why we pay our taxes. It's just sometimes folks think that governments can be all things to all people, and we can't. We have to focus on those basic services that we are required by law to provide in order to make, you know, our communities thrive and be able to attract more people to live here, their families and their businesses.
Okay. I'm going to go to a question that we've kind of been circling around this question a little bit. Mr. Monzel, you will be answering this one first. Again, this is from Andrew from Cincinnati. As a small business owner in the county, I would like to know what I, what can the County Commissioner do to the county, to make the county a more attractive place for business to locate or expand? What can the county do to reduce the burden and red tape for businesses here to locate? Again, we've been circling this.
Right.
But I think he wants a little more explanation here.
Well, specifically, is we made it, make doing business here in Hamilton County easier. And part of that is looking at our processes within the county and being an engineer and looking at how we do things on the private sector, is trying to come up with those lean-out processes of making things simpler and easier for businesses to come in and get their permits, businesses come in and get the building plans approved, or even just looking for land that's available. We created the land bank in Hamilton County that's being able to take abandoned and blighted properties across our communities that are scourge on some of our communities with crime and blight, or being able to take those and put them into a land bank for future development, or turn them into, you know, adjacent properties for homeowners to put a side lot in through their home. It's trying to make sure that our processes are as simple as possible, and looking at technology is an aspect of doing that. You know, we're trying to put, you know, approvals for permits and plannings online digitally so that they don't have to come down with their paper and get them approved. We need to make sure that the taxation is as low as possible and as easy as possible to deal with in regards to filling out their tax forms. Again, technology provides us those opportunities to simplify our processes and make them easier for businesses to do business here in Hamilton County.
Mr. Feeney.
Sure. I absolutely agree. Processes are very, very important. You know, my background in software engineering, software is all about creating very efficient processes, and, you know, we do need to operate as a lean government, and one of the ways we do that is by reducing our footprint on the ground and making it so that small businesses like your own can go online, get whatever permits you need to get, the same kind of things that Mr. Monzel was talking about, but I actually have the experience to go out and implement that as a software engineer.
Mr. Monzel, did you want to continue forward?
No, we can move on.
Great. We've got another email question coming in. This is, looks like it is from Lynn, and Lynn writes, "The city wants, wanted to enact a law that would require bidders on metropolitan sewer district projects to only allow bidding by companies that had an apprenticeship program..." I will learn to speak tonight, I promise by the end of this I will. "...that an apprenticeship program in place for the last past five years. Do you agree with the city's efforts to enact this type of law?" And, Mr. Feeney, we'll start with you on this question.
Absolutely. So, I do agree with the premise behind what they're trying to accomplish. You know, my opponent here, Mr. Monzel, was concerned that the city of Cincinnati, who manages the sewer district, which is owned by the county, might be wasting tax dollars on these pesky unions who love their living wages. You know, "How dare any worker we ask to sludge in our waste organize for a living wage? How dare they?" So, Mr. Monzel took it upon himself to waste some tax dollars suing the city of Cincinnati to resolve this ideological question. He won, so now it's up to the county to work with the city on how to move forward, given the court's decision. You'd think, seeing as Mr. Monzel was formerly on the Cincinnati City Council, he could come to terms with his former colleagues and get moving on this important federally mandated work. So far, he hasn't, and if reelected, I'm sure you can expect more litigation from him instead of just working to get the job done. Meanwhile, your water bills will keep going up due to this unnecessary Republican delay.
Mr. Monzel.
So, the responsible bidder ordinance that the city of Cincinnati passed dealt with requiring businesses who would bid on projects for metropolitan sewer district work to be in the city of Cincinnati. They would have to be, have an apprenticeship program of five years, and with that, it gave requirements that took jobs that were going to be bid out that potentially 13 companies would bid on, now two or three companies would bid on. And the cost of those projects would increase on average about 15%. And when you're looking at a federally mandated Environmental Protection Agency consent decree where we have to fix our metropolitan sewer district of the amount of $3.2 billion, and that's in 2006 dollars, today it's roughly about $4 billion with a B, 15% additional cost is hundreds of millions of dollars more, and that's going to be picked up by the ratepayers of Hamilton County. It's not paid by your income tax or your sales tax, your property tax, it's paid by the rates you're paying in your water bills. And to me, with businesses, we're hearing about businesses who want to move here, this is one of the major impediments for anybody who want to move here, families or businesses, if they see a water bill that's double or triple the amount of our surrounding communities. So, what we have to do is keep our costs as low as possible, to keep our rates as low as possible, in order to keep Hamilton County attractive to families and businesses.
If you are joining us on September 29th, please get enacted. We have Andrew, we have Lynn, we have many coming, so if you'd like to join in, please do. 825-3971. Live@wacross.org is the email. No question will be unanswered. We've got a few coming up, plus some of my own, so I'm going to go to one of my own as well. Hamilton County has also suffered some decline, unfortunately, that in population, especially from the younger set. What do you specifically plan to make the county a little more attractive? We do have the banks going on, which has been a wonderful thing, but is that enough? And we are going to start that with Mr. Monzel.
Well, actually, this past 2013, Hamilton County added more than 2,000 new people, making it the biggest gainer in the 15-county area, and actually, Warren County was close, they were just underneath 2,000 people that had moved into the area. So, actually, Hamilton County has increased population, which you don't hear about. You're always hear about people leaving the city of Cincinnati, leaving Hamilton County. We actually have increased, and I think it is because of what we have been doing here in Hamilton County with the Banks Project downtown, you know, which is a city-county project that we've worked both together on. I started it when I was on Cincinnati City Council, and I'm hoping to finish it as a County Commissioner whereby we're making things attractive for families, for, you know, single people to come into Hamilton County to want to live and work here. So, to me, I think we're moving in the right direction, the numbers show that, by a population increase compared to our surrounding communities, I think those are positive signs that Hamilton County's on the move.
Mr. Feeney.
Absolutely. So, you know, this decline in population, you know, the statistics go back and forth, but if you want to target young people like myself, studies show that what we're looking for is affordable housing, we're looking for accessible public transportation and light rail, and we're particularly looking, and part of the affordable housing, we need to keep our tax rates low. Now, Monzel actually reversed one of the rollbacks that the 1996 stadium deal put in place for property owners, so our property taxes actually went up under Chris Monzel. The other thing that we look for as young people is living wage jobs. You know, it's a very tough job market out there. We have to compete regionally, and one of the ways we do that is making sure that the jobs we do have offer living wages, and that's certainly what my policy stands for.
Mr. Monzel.
Well, you know, I think from a standpoint of really looking at the market of who we want to live in Hamilton County and move here, it's, for me, very important to make sure that our communities are safe, that they're clean. You know, people want to make sure that when their kids are outside playing, playing in the yard, that they're going to not get hurt, they're not going to have any issues. For me, that's something that's very important, that we make sure that families and young people who are attracted to Cincinnati, that they know it's safe and clean, and that they have job opportunities. You know, we are very blessed to have the PNGs, the Krogers, the GEs, the Western Southerns and Fifth Thirds who are located here in Hamilton County that have a lot of job opportunities for folks who want to come out and start. You know, I had an opportunity when I came back from college to start working in Hamilton County and got a chance to move away, but I came back because I knew what a great place this was to raise a family and to have an opportunity. So, I want more of that to happen with more young people moving back to Hamilton County.
Mr. Feeney, you can finish that off.
Sure, absolutely. You know, of course, we want safe, clean communities, but when it comes to young people in particular, studies again show that we're delaying having children because of the cost of college education, we're just burdened with all this student loan debt. And so, one of the things that I propose is, right here in Hamilton County, we offer the same thing that Cuyahoga County offers, and that is, we start up in Ohio 529 for everybody that does have a child and stays in Hamilton County and invests in our community and goes to our schools here.
We're going to follow up that question. Of course, we talked about bringing the youth in, but of course, that population also includes the aging and the elderly. How do we, what role does the, do you see the county having in the care and support for our, that changing demographic? Obviously, the Boomers are getting up there, and we're going to be changing left and right. So, Mr. Feeney, we'll start with you. What about our aging population?
Sure, absolutely. So, again, county government, one of the most important services that we offer is it in daycare, and one of the things that we can really focus on is affordable housing. I mean, that's a huge issue if you're on a limited income as an advanced age person, you really care about your housing costs. If it's going to take 75% of your income just to have a roof over your head, how are you going to be able to afford to feed yourself? How are you going to be able to afford anything else? So, we really need to focus on the affordable housing issue.
Mr. Monzel.
You know, we are very blessed in Hamilton County to have so many housing opportunities, especially affordable housing. We have a plethora of affordable housing, and that's why a lot of people move here, because it's so much cheaper, cheaper way of living than on the East Coast or West Coast or up in Chicago. It's just, you know, an easier place to get a house in, to be able to raise a family, and to retire in as well. And so, with regards to our seniors, I think Hamilton County offers a lot of opportunities with our seniors levy that we have whereby we offer Meals on Wheels program, give seniors an opportunity to get the services they need and to stay in their home. I mean, to, for a senior to stay in their home, it's much cheaper than it is to go into a care facility, and it gives them that independence and ability. I, my grandmother had an opportunity to stay in her home all the way until she passed away, and to her, it was so important to have that home and be able to be there and live in it, and being able at Hamilton County to help those seniors, you know, be able to do that, to me, is a very important thing for them as well as for our community.
Mr. Feeney, care to elaborate?
Sure. So, one of the issues when you're looking at affordable housing in Hamilton County is these concentrated pockets of what they call affordable housing, but really, it's, would these people really want to live in these communities? So, it's great if they can stay in their home. Economically, that's not always possible, maybe they need to go to, not necessarily an assisted living facility, but, you know, some kind of affordable housing that's safe for them, and if it's going to be of most use to these people, we've got to spread out this affordable housing throughout the county. We can't just have it in concentrated pockets because that's where a lot of crime really breaks out.
And, Mr. Monzel, you have the way to round it out.
Well, you know, honestly, I think with all the different communities that we have in Hamilton County, we were blessed, 49 different communities with so many different options, from urban settings to more rural suburban settings, that we do have many, many affordable housing opportunities available, and you're seeing communities come back, too. I mean, the communities that, my opponent lives in North College Hill, they're seeing a renaissance and having more folks coming in and moving into their community. You know, the first ring suburbs are, have been struggling, but, you know, now we're starting to see them turn around and become vibrant, which is important, you know, for empty nesters, for folks who, you know, don't want to be living out in suburbs but want to be living closer to maybe where they work or downtown. I mean, those are the opportunities I think Hamilton County has, and that makes us attractive.
All right. Well, Jay's going to bring up the question, I'm sure that everybody's been anticipating, but here we go. "Cincinnati is building a streetcar line, and they are having trouble finding money to operate it. If the city looks to the county for operating funds at some point in the future, would you support asking county taxpayers to assist this funding in its operating costs?" And, Mr. Monzel, we will start with you.
Well, absolutely not. As, when I was on Cincinnati City Council, I did not support the building of the streetcar based on the fact that we didn't have any money in the operating fund to actually pay for maintenance and operation of the streetcar, and as we're finding out today, they're running into that problem. And to be able to go to the county and put that extra cost onto county taxpayers, to me, is just not right, since they didn't even have a right to vote on whether or not to have a streetcar. So, all of a sudden, you're now saying, hey, you're going to have to pick up the cost of operating it, when they couldn't even have a chance to vote whether or not to build it. So, for me, I just totally disagree with that, and I would not support it whatsoever.
Mr. Feeney.
Sure. "Like or not, this will become a county issue. The longer we pretend it isn't, the worse off future light rail projects will be. The streetcar will be operated by Sorda, nearly half of whom's board is appointed by the county. The commission plays a leading role in OKI, which controls federal transit funding for the region." The, uh, sorry. "Ohio Revised Code Section 307.202 says county commissioners can develop rail service. So, the question is not if the county will get involved, it's when and to what extent. I strongly believe that Hamilton County light rail projects should directly benefit county residents, not just downtown residents and visitors. We're not going to see the greater benefit of light rail until it offers a realistic alternative for daily commuters going downtown and vice versa from the suburbs. And it's not going to transform how we live until taking the rail is faster than driving. That requires dedicated rideaways, something the city of Cincinnati isn't yet offering the streetcar. There's a lot of work to be done to make this project and others like it successful, and a part-time commissioner isn't going to cut it. It's time to elect a commission majority who actually believes in the benefits of public transportation."
Mr. Monzel, care to respond?
The issue with transportation in general is the amount of people that you have using it. So, and that's why you see successful transportation systems in more of the bigger cities, the Chicagos, the New Yorks. It's tougher when you're in a smaller city such as Cincinnati or in our region, because when you start looking at the cost of building this and then look about the amount of ridership, it really does, there's no cost-benefit analysis that makes it say, this is worth it. And in fact, when I was on Cincinnati City Council looking at the streetcar operation, you know, it was, the numbers that we're looking at was going to need between 100 to 200 riders, you know, every hour, every day, for 10 hours a day in order to even break even. And we just don't have the massive people down there at this time, and I don't know if we ever did back when it was 500,000 people in the city of Cincinnati. You know, for me, it's that cost-benefit analysis of looking at whether or not this investment of millions, hundreds of millions of dollars, is worth for just a few thousand people to utilize the system.
And, Mr. Feeney, I can round this out.
Yeah, so, you know, he mentioned Cincinnati is a small city, you know, why can't we aspire to be like these other large cities? Why can't we act like the large city that we actually are? We're the third-largest city in all of Ohio. Ohio would be one of the greatest states in America. And when you're talking about number of users, you know, it's really about proximity to the streetcar route. Right now, it's just downtown. Well, what if it was actually all the way out into the county? Wouldn't the number of users actually increase? And couldn't we start getting to a positive cost-benefit analysis?
All right. We've already been mentioning a little bit about housing, and affordable housing is one of them, and of course, when most people think, some, some people think of affordable housing, they think of Section 8. What actions will you support to address, or support to address the negative impacts on many communities that have occurred in the result of the influx of Section 8 vouchers and the need for more equitable distribution of these vouchers throughout the county? And we are going to start with Mr. Feeney on this question.
Sure, absolutely. Sure, absolutely. So, I've already talked about, we really need to spread out the affordable housing. And some of that affordable housing is Section Eight. And Section Eight is not a stigma. It's not something that you need to be so concerned about, oh my God, there's Section Eight development going down the road. These developments are nothing like they were fifty years ago. They're nothing to be scared of. And we, as the county, have the ability to use the land bank to help redistribute some of the, you know, the housing redevelopment throughout the county and make sure that it is affordable. And I think we need to be doing that on a regular basis.
Mr. Monzel?
One aspect of it is, we have the Cincinnati Metropolitan Housing Authority, which is a board that we get appointments for. And one of the things, actions that I pushed through and got the state legislature to actually agree to do is to expand the board, so it had more representation of suburban communities. Because as you said, there is more growth that's going out into our suburbs, that they should have representation on that board of, of just knowing where those projects are going to be taking place. So, we added two more members to the board that were, you know, one from the township associations, one from municipal league, which I think added another voice, another dimension of saying, you know, let's be smart how we're going to do affordable housing. We need it, we got plenty of it as it is already. Do we need to go build more? You know, to me, I, I think, let's fill what we have and, and make sure we utilize that before we go off and build some that we can't even sustain right now. And Cincinnati Metropolitan Housing Authority has a backlog of, of millions of dollars, tens of millions of dollars of repairs on existing structures that they have now funding to do. So, to go out and build more, to me, just seems, you know, fiscally irresponsible in being able to, you know, take care of the assets that you have and be able to make sure we have homes for those folks who need them and take care of those homes.
Mr. Feeny, care to respond?
I think that's great that we've expanded the county representation on Metropolitan Housing Authority. Wouldn't it be great if we could expand the county representation on the county commission?
And Mr. Monzel, care to round out the question?
Well, yeah, you know, I think we do have county representation on, on the commission. Commissioner Portune actually lives in Green Township. I know Commissioner Hartman lives in the city of Cincinnati, and I actually live out in Glendale, and I grew up in, in Hamilton County. So, I think we do have a, a good amount of county representation going on in, in the county commission, and, and also both sides as well of the city, with Commissioner Hartman living in the city and both Commissioner Portune and I being on Cincinnati City Council. I think it's a, a great mix right now. It's been working well in order to solve the issues.
The, a few questions ago, we were talking a little bit of a pro and a con. One, when we were talking about the streetcar, we were seeing that it could possibly become a city-county merger. We talked about the banks and that being a city-county merger. This is a pro and a con on, on that, that aspect and that front. Do you see city and county projects like this being a means to move the county forward? And is it necessary for both of you to be inactive in that way? And we'll start with Mr. Monzel on that question.
Well, well, absolutely. In any businesses you're in right now, you try to find out ways to do business smarter, to do business more efficient, effectively, and cost effectively. And, and having, you know, shared services with other municipalities, with the city of Cincinnati, those are opportunities that we can cut costs on how it affects our citizens and be able to run the government more efficiently. We've been doing that with the projects you mentioned from the Banks Project. We're looking at other ones that, today, we just talked about potentially combining the county prosecutor's office with the city's prosecutor's office. Right now, in the courthouse, you have, in, if it's a city issue with a municipal court and offenders in there from the city of Cincinnati, you have a city prosecutor and you have a county prosecutor in the same courtroom doing the same thing. And, and that's duplication of effort. You know, why don't we just have one lawyer there, and it'll be able to save us, both the city and the county, from incurring that cost? I mean, so that's just one example. Mr. Feeny?
Sure. I absolutely agree. We, we need to work together with the county and all the municipalities across the county towards shared services and towards just working together, towards the common good. You know, one of the examples that came up very recently was Music Hall. My opponent showed that he could not work with the city of Cincinnati on helping out Music Hall. So, I think it's time for a change in leadership and get somebody in there who doesn't have the background and can actually sit down and talk to leaders from all these other different municipalities and get work done.
Mr. Monzel, care to?
Well, I'm assuming we're going to, we're covering the, the Music Hall issue sooner or later. But from, from a standpoint, then I'll just briefly talk on how we, you know, first got into that issue, the I-CON tax was definitely in regards to Union Terminal. Union Terminal was being funded by a countywide property tax levy for the past ten years, and actually, for over the past eighteen years, county property owners have given over seventy million dollars of their hard-earned money to support Cincinnati Museum Center at Union Terminal. So, the question was, should we continue doing that, operating funding, or do we want to do something more to actually look at fixing the building that's falling apart? Union Terminal's structurally falling apart. And so, that was a question we posed. So, to me, it was always about Union Terminal and figuring out whether or not we should continue the property tax, whether or not we should try to fix it in another method, or whether or not it should be torn down. And that's, that was what we kind of studied. Over time, Music Hall got inserted into that conversation, which unfortunately, to me, was all about Union Terminal to begin with, because that is a building that is structurally having issues and, you know, it's falling apart. And this is an opportunity for citizens to, to vote whether or not they want to save it.
Mr. Feeny?
Okay. Are we getting into the Music Hall thing, or?
Go right ahead.
All right. Well, the Cultural Facilities Task Force, which Mr. Monzel actually helped appoint people to, was led by a top local businessman and woman. And they spent nearly a year carefully crafting a hundred ninety-five dollar million plan that would save both Union Terminal and Music Hall. And it was very early on that they inserted Music Hall into this process. So, we had plenty of time to coach them out of studying Music Hall, if that was the direction he wanted to go. But at the last minute, he and his Tea Party friends instead hatched a plan for a hundred and seventy-five million dollars that would save only Union Terminal, and even that's a maybe. I'm not so sure that this new plan is really fiscally responsible, given the very small difference between the two plans. And the reasoning behind dropping Music Hall is spurious at best, really because the county's never funded it. You know, it's owned by the city, just like Union Terminal. So, there's, there's got to be a time to start, right? If that's how the commission acted eighteen years ago, we wouldn't have the museum center at Union Terminal today. This is another example of Mr. Monzel not wanting to work with the city of Cincinnati in the best interests of the taxpaying public. If we can't get our own affairs in order, how are we expected to maintain our leadership role in the region?
Mr. Monzel?
So, as, as I was saying earlier, Union Terminal was the focus of the question of what we want to save. We did not appoint people to the Cultural Facilities Task Force. It was a group of volunteers that came together to kind of look into this. And I do appreciate Bob McDonald and, and the leadership that they provided in providing a plan that did include Music Hall. For, for me and, and for my fellow commissioner, Greg Hartman, you know, it was a bridge too far. It was too much that, of what they were asking for, fourteen years at a quarter cent sales tax. You know, fourteen years times, you know, thirty-four, thirty-five million dollars is, is hundreds of millions of dollars. And it's the difference between a fourteen-year tax and a nine, a five-year tax, is nine years at that thirty million. It's, it's over, you know, three hundred million dollars that we're saving by not doing the fourteen-year plan. So, by looking at the five-year plan, just focusing on Union Terminal and fixing what's actually broken, it, it's something that we thought was, was more important, more prudent to do, especially since both buildings are technically owned by the city of Cincinnati. And being on Cincinnati City Council, we had many opportunities to fix Music Hall, but unfortunately, the city never moved forward with it. Instead, they chose to do other projects, such as the streetcar, and utilize funding there of hundreds of millions of dollars, instead of putting forward to an I-CON that is so worthy of, of saving. And it's something that I think will happen regardless, because I think we have a great community here who wants to make sure that Music Hall survives for future generations on. But for us, it was all about Union Terminal and focusing on something that, to me, is falling apart and needs to be fixed, and it's an opportunity for citizens to vote on whether they want to do that or not.
Mr. Feeny, round it out?
Sure. I'm not sure these numbers add up. You know, it's a twenty million dollar difference, but we're saying five years versus fourteen years. So, in five years, we can raise a hundred and seventy-five million, but with the same tax over fourteen years, we can only get an extra twenty million. And there's a nine-year difference there that, it, it just doesn't make sense.
All right. Well, we've, of course, have started to address many different items. We still have a number, number to go. We have just a little bit under twenty minutes to continue. So, if you're watching on September twenty-ninth, please join us, eight-two-five-three-nine-seven-one, or live@waycross.org. As you've seen, many of the emails have been addressed. You will get yours answered as well if you do participate this evening. We've talked about county, county-city projects. Let's throw the city, the state in now. We have another piece of the puzzle that unfortunately, or fortunately, does bring things in, and that is, of course, seventy-five and the infamous Brent Spence Bridge project. At some point, a lot of heads are going to have to come together to come, to, to make a consensus. Starting with Mr. Feeny, how do you feel that the county should partake in this discussion, and where should they begin? Let's, again, starting with you, Mr. Feeny.
Sure. So, I came out really early on the Brent Spence project and said, we don't need any tolls on the Brent Spence. You know, that would set a dangerous precedent for our region. We don't have any tolls here in the Cincinnati metro area. We don't need any tolls. That puts an undue hardship on county workers. You know, we have workers in all three states here. Sometimes they live in Hamilton County, work in northern Kentucky. Maybe they live in northern Kentucky, come to Hamilton County. Either way, we don't need to be burdening these hard workers with additional costs and, and tolls just to support this federal bridge project.
Mr. Monzel?
And I, I, I agree. I do not support tolls for the project. I think from a standpoint of, if you're looking at it, the, the bridge itself is owned by the state of Kentucky. The river, Ohio River, is actually owned by the state of Kentucky, three-fourths of it. So, anything that's going to happen with that bridge has to be through what it takes place down in Frankfurt with the state legislature of Kentucky. And, and so, right now, no matter what we're saying up here, it depends on what they want to do and how they act in, in being able to, you know, fix the Brent Spence Bridge. But I, I do think that we do pay taxes on our gasoline. We do get, you know, how much of that back from the federal government to help on these projects. That's where it should be coming from. And there should be time for, you know, fixing the infrastructure within our communities. If we can do it across the world, we should be able to do it in Hamilton County.
Mr. Feeny, care to respond?
I completely agree. You know, it is a Kentucky project, and the state of Ohio has done their part. They've passed the legislation that they needed to pass, so that no matter which way Kentucky goes, this, this project can move forward. So, really, it's Kentucky needs to find the funding.
And Mr. Monzel?
Yep.
All right. Well, of course, some of the things that we also have to look at is, as we've already been talking about, is the idea of consolidation, which we've already begun. Of course, we understand where you stand, but what, what do you think you could bring to the table that would maximize the efforts in allowing communities to retain their identity and autonomy by, again, while we're doing this consolidation point? I'm going to start with Mr. Monzel on that question.
Well, yeah, I actually had an opportunity this evening to go visit the Hamilton County Municipal League, where they're very concerned about what happens with local government and, and whether it's going to be existing five years from now, ten years now, depending on what's happening at the state. And I sat there tonight, and I'll, and I'll say here, that I do not support metro government. I, I think the best government is the government that's closest to the people. And what we have to do is look at those opportunities to consolidate services, shared services, in order to keep our costs down, but still have the identity of the Lincoln Heights, of the Reddings, of the Green Townships, so that people have government close to them that they can feel responsive to, but at the same time, that we're collaborating with each other on, you know, paving streets, you know, snow removal, you know, making sure that the public safety is available for all those communities. I mean, those type of opportunities are there. In fact, the sheriff just signed a contract with Silverton to be able to provide their police services through the Hamilton County Sheriff's Department. So, we are trying to work on a scale that helps out our communities. But, but to me, I think they, that's what we, we have here. We're so blessed to have forty-nine different individual communities, and we should make sure that, that survives going forward into the future.
Mr. Feeny?
So, I'm also against unit gov. You know, I, I think we really need to maintain our identities out in the county, being one of the people that live, you know, in the city of North College Hill. It's a very small city, but it's a very important city. And, you know, we'd like to keep our autonomy as to the best of our ability. But we absolutely are looking elsewhere for shared services. We're looking to the county for leadership there. I support shared services in all areas that create synergies and deliver better service to county residents, preferably at a lower taxpayer cost. Within the city of Cincinnati, this would include public transportation, economic development, emergency management, IT and facilities. But outside of the city of Cincinnati, it might also include road services and consolidated emergency service districts.
Mr. Monzel, care to respond?
Well, I think there's a lot of opportunities of, of being able to find those services, you know, from, from just taking care of the roads to, to snow removal that we can offer through county services or through local municipalities as well. And we're seeing local municipalities and townships working together as well and, and trying to provide those services cheaply. Because they, it's just like running your own business. You've got to be able to survive to provide the services that your citizens need, and, and they do that by coming up with different ways to combine them, either through safety services or through fleet maintenance. And, and to me, those are the type of things that we need to continue to work on and develop across the whole county.
All right. Well, one of the other places that we have to hit and hit hard is, of course, crime. And we're, we're very fortunate, or unfortunate, depending on how you look at it. But what specific plans do you, as commissioner, plan to address the issues of crime, incarceration, and the, and treatment programs here in Hamilton County? And I'm going to start with Mr. Feeny on that one.
Absolutely. So, crime is a very important issue. Hamilton County has seen its share of crime and more than its fair share of crime. We all got tired over the last couple decades of just hearing about every shooting on the news every night. I wish the local media would maybe focus on some positive aspects of our community instead. But it is up to the county to, to help provide some leadership in this area. I think we really need to direct our police forces to focus on violent crimes and property crimes, and really focus on getting the patrols out there and making sure that they have the funding that they can focus on these different areas. Right now, you know, they're spread out. There's just so many different laws that we expect our police officers to go out and enforce. And sometimes they're conflicting laws. We really need to go back and look at all these different laws and make sure they're clear, make sure our instructions to our police force are clear on how they should uniformly enforce these different laws. And again, you know, we need to continue this focus on violent crime.
Mr. Monzel?
Yeah, that's one thing that, when I've been involved with any type of government, local government, county government, is to me, one of those basic core services that citizens expect is public safety. Now, that's why they're paying their taxes, is that when they call nine-one-one or when they call for an EMS service, that it happens, it gets to their door on time. I mean, it's just one of those basic services that governments are supposed to deliver. And so, for us, that's something that we want to make sure. In our county budget, for about, over seventy percent of it goes to either sheriff's department, justice center, prosecutor's office, or the court system. So, that whole law and order aspect of county government carries about seven, over seventy percent of our general fund goes to that. We have been trying to look at our sheriff's department. In fact, we've actually added more funding to it over the past year in order to give them the resources to help go out and fight crime in our communities. Using technologies is one of those big aspects of trying to utilize, from an overcrowding jails perspective, of using anklet bracelets to be able to go out and monitor folks, low-level offenders, to be able to go out there. So, if they're not in the justice center, we don't have to go take them to a doctor's appointment or pay for their health care or pay for their food. If they're out on their own in their home and they have an anklet bracelet, they have to take themselves to the doctor. They have to, you know, feed themselves. They, they have to take care of those, you know, basic needs themselves and not on the backs of the taxpayers. So, using technology is really an opportunity to help with reducing crime in Hamilton County.
Mr. Feeny, care to respond?
Absolutely. I agree. We've got to use technology everywhere that we can. But one of the things that I've heard throughout this campaign is that we're really arresting way too many juveniles. When you look at the, the Hamilton County and the city of Cincinnati compared with other metro areas, we are arresting too many juveniles. So, I think we do need to focus on prevention instead of just throwing these kids in jail. You know, these kids are less likely to get into trouble if there are affordable activities for them to partake in after school, and if there's economic opportunity once they reach a certain age. So, we need to focus on prevention and not just throwing everyone in jail.
And Mr. Monzel, round that question out, please.
Well, also, in regards to just opportunities for, for anyone to get jobs, Hamilton County has created over six thousand jobs in the last four years. Our unemployment rate has actually dropped to four point nine percent. It is lower than even the state of Ohio's unemployment rate. So, we are doing things the right way of trying to get job opportunities for folks, so that they don't turn to crime. But there, you know, there's also, you need to make sure that, that you have not only the opportunities, but the programs. And one of those big issues that we're facing in every community now is heroin, and the scourge of heroin in the suburban communities and across our county, and how to deal with that. We have the Hamilton County Drug Court that actually provides medicated treatment services, like the drug VivaTrol, to help folks who are on heroin to get off it. But it takes time and it takes treatment, and, and that's what we have several county tax, property tax levies for, is for funding of those. You know, from the Hamilton County Drug Court to our family and treatment services levy, that's actually on the ballot this fall. Now, these are, are levy dollars that go to provide programs to help citizens get the medication they need, so that they can turn their lives around.
We're getting down to the bottom of the hour here, so I just want to kind of round out the last few questions here. Regardless of political standing, Democrat or Republican, what makes you the best person for the job of county commissioner? And I am going to start with Mr. Monzel with that, please.
Well, as an, as an engineer, I'm, I'm a natural problem solver. It's something I like to do, to be able to go in and look at an issue and try to come up with the most creative way to solve that problem. And, and for me, you know, county government or any government at this time needs problem solvers, people that can think outside the box, come up creative solutions, and not just use the same old tax and spend type policies of just raise taxes and develop a program and that's going to solve it. We can't do that anymore. That's going to just drive away families and businesses. We need to make sure that we treat the money that's given to us like it's your money, just the citizens out there, that we watch every dollar of it and how we spend it, that we make sure that we're transparent and that we're actually providing the services that are necessary for families and businesses to succeed in Hamilton County. So, I, I bring those problem-solving skills, and, and also just from being in community and being involved and volunteering and, and helping out those, you know, within our community to understand what is needed, to make sure that Hamilton County is a great place to live, work and raise a family. And to me, we have so many things that we're so blessed with in Hamilton County, that I just, I just think having those opportunities, folks will want to move here, they want to put their business here, because I, I think Hamilton County is the, the best county in America.
All right. And Mr. Feeny, same question?
Absolutely. I'm also an engineer, and as we discussed earlier, as a software engineer, I focus on core business processes and how to improve them incrementally. So, that's something I definitely bring to the table. We both have a, a different viewpoint than maybe, you know, another lawyer that you're going to throw into some county office. But as a newcomer, I, I can build the necessary relationships with city officials. You know, I've not burnt all these bridges, because I don't have that kind of history in the county. And I can work with these other officials in all different levels of government to move the county forward in the best interests of the taxpayer.
All right. And my final question before closing statements, fifteen years later, after you've taken office, you have gone on, have, Hamilton County has perspired, perspired, has persevered. I'm perspiring. That's a whole other issue. But, no, you, fifteen years later, looking back at what has happened, how would you like to leave your mark fifteen years from now? And I'm going to start with Mr. Feeny.
Absolutely. So, I hope, you know, fifteen years into the future, that we are a, a city that acts like its size, that we actually realize the opportunities that we have here in the Midwest, to be able to expand our metro area and be able to really offer the services that businesses want. I hope that every, you know, the unemployment continues to drop and that county government was one of the leaders behind making that happen. And I hope public transportation options have come up to speed. You know, we don't need maybe some light rail that goes five miles an hour. Maybe we've got something that actually goes fast enough that we can get our residents out in the suburbs, down goes fast enough that we can get our residents out in the suburbs, downtown, to their jobs, and downtown continues to thrive because of that.
And Mr. Monzel.
You know, 15 years from now, I hope Hamilton County is just thriving as it is today, that it has low unemployment rate, lots of jobs, opportunities, that our communities are safe and clean for children, to be able to grow up in, to have the opportunities that I had growing up here. To me, in 15 years, I just hope that we continue on a pace that just makes Hamilton County, like I said, the greatest county in America. And hopefully, in 15 years, the Bengals have won a Super Bowl, and the Reds have won another world championship. So, to me, I'm hoping that in 15 years, there's a lot of great things coming to Hamilton County, and I just want to be around to see it happen.
Excellent. All right. That ends our question portion of the evening. The final portion is up to you. Mr. Monzel, we'll start with your closing statement.
Well, first, I want to thank you, Jason, and Waycross Media, for hosting this event tonight. I want to thank Mr. Feeny for coming out and discussing the issues that are so important to our citizens and the future of Hamilton County. You know, for me, it's, like I said earlier, you know, I just love Hamilton County, and all its communities. It's just a great place, and I believe that anyone can live, work, or raise a family here, and I want to continue that for not only my children, but for other children throughout Hamilton County, by giving them those communities that are safe and clean, giving them job opportunities, so that they want to live here after they get out of college and move back, that they want to start a family here, and continue the great things that are happening in Hamilton County. But times have been tough over the past few years, we've gone through some really tough economic times, and folks are, you know, really feeling it, families are working two jobs, seniors are on fixed incomes, you know, so we need to make sure that county government protects your money like you do. And we can't spend what we don't have, and we have to live within our means, and that's what I'll do, and I ask for your vote on November 4th to be your county commissioner. Thank you.
Mr. Feeny, you wrap it up, please.
So this election is really rare. You have the choice not between two lawyers, but between two well-educated engineers, who both bring a different perspective to government service. We're both managers at top multinational corporations. The question is not whether you want an MBA or an MTP representing you, it's whether you want an elected official, whose salary you pay to go to work each day for you, or